Want to call the East Green with Central School District Board meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Attendance tonight, we have eight of our board members here in the Columbia High School library. Mr. Dunn, Mr. Mann, myself, Ms. Booth, Ms. Curtin, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Yaboah, Ms. Kramerski, and Ms. Massey is virtual. Good evening, everybody. And first business will be to please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. This is the public hearing portion of our budget. And the first order of business is to, for the call of the meeting, I need a motion to waive the reading of the public hearing document. Pretty lengthy kind of routine. A motion from Mark, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? So that reading is moved. We have a special presentation tonight, and I'll turn over to Mr. Simons to introduce our guest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buno. We are very grateful that County Executive Steve McLaughlin is joining us for our board meeting tonight for a special accommodation related to the New York State Public High School Athletic Association's designation of our athletic department's efforts to receive the winner community service award. So without further ado, I'd ask County Executive McLaughlin, Mike Leonard, our athletic director, his secretary Natalie Young, and Audra Debaco to step forward to the area in front of where Mr. Buno typically sits for a special acknowledgement from our county executive, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you Superintendent Simon. It's a pleasure to be with everyone tonight. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate that very much. It's a great setup, by the way. Good job with this. Yeah, come on up. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge and recognize what a great job the kids did and you all did in keeping the kids on track, which I know is sometimes tough with two boys of my own. You know, it's sometimes tough to keep high schoolers on track, but you did it, and the kids obviously stepped up as they always do around here. Columbia High is a very special place, and you show it all the time. So I just wanted to stop by and recognize all of you and the kids upon winning the high school athletics winter 2021 Community Service Challenge. And that, as I understand it, was what? Fifty-seven families were helped and over 200 children. So tough year, as we all know, and hopefully now coming out of this and getting back to normal. So there was a lot of folks and a lot of kids in need. And I know you know this, as a social worker and as coaches. The athletic field is great, but it's a lot about what happens and what you're teaching them not on the athletic field is what carries forward into life. So I want to make sure that we took the time to recognize the achievement, and thank you for everything that you did. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you for that, County Executive McLaughlin. We appreciate your time here this evening at our board meeting and to recognize the staff from the athletic department, all the work that they do. So we appreciate it. Next, we will go on to the primary role of our public hearing tonight is the proposed 21-22 school budget meeting, and it'll be presented by Superintendent Simons.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. Can everyone hear me virtually? Very good. I'm going to move over to this area because I think Mr. Goodwin has a plan to move the camera, and my eyes are not as young as they once were. So I'm very privileged to present the public hearing regarding the proposed 21-22 budget. We've had a number of meetings to share the budget information with our community. We have just completed a round of all of our school faculty and staff meetings, finishing up with our high school at the beginning of this week. Additionally, we have met with our elementary parent-teacher organizations, our middle school and high school parent-teacher organizations together virtually. I want to thank the administrative team and the board members who have been joining me for these sessions, along with Wayne Pratt, who is the Chair of our Budget Review and Advisory Committee. Those meetings have gone very well. The other meeting that we had was, thanks to Town Supervisor Jack Conway, we were able to present our budget to the Town of East Greenbush Board, and it was very well received by the town board. This presentation fulfills the requirement for the public hearing notice that the board opened the meeting with waiving. During this presentation, we share with our community the location of the hearing, all of the required notifications. Additionally, we have available for the community budget documents to provide a line-by-line accounting of our expenses and our revenues. Those are available online, and we will talk later on in the presentation about where you can obtain a hard copy of those budget documents, should you wish to review those. We will talk this evening about the voting date and the various propositions, including the budget that community members will have an opportunity to vote on on May 18th. We have an election of our Board of Education candidates. This year, we have four available seats and four candidates. Additionally, we will make sure that the community is aware of the voting districts and the polling locations, as well as the process to ensure that you are registered to vote and some of the timeline considerations regarding making sure that you are registered in time for us to meet the legal requirement to review the roles. Additionally, we'll talk about the qualifications and the eligibility for voting, and also the ability to fill out an application for an absentee ballot. All of those areas are required as public disclosures, and we will fulfill that requirement this evening. We defy during the beginning of the school year official publications of newspapers for release of formal notices. In our case, in East Greenbush, that is the Albany Times Union and the Troy Record. We fulfilled the requirement to make sure that we have two newspapers and that we publish the notice for Times. We've also taken the additional steps, since we moved the date of this meeting to today, to re-provide those notifications to those newspaper outlets. The website also contains a lot of information related to the public notice. The budget packets are available online. You can obtain those also at our central administration building, located next to the Janay Elementary School, and in each and every one of our school buildings. So if a member of the community would like a copy of the budget packet, you can pick one up at any of the locations, or you can simply contact our business office, ask for the clerk, and we will provide you with a copy. Additionally, we provide budget documents in the East Greenbush, North Greenbush, Sand Lake, and Nassau libraries for your convenience, and on the district's website, or again upon request. The budget packets include a summary of the district's projected revenues for next year. That includes state aid, the local tax levy, as well as a payment in lieu of taxes agreements, which are approved by the Rensselaer County Industrial Development Agency. Additionally, we include all of our expenditures for each of the categories of the budget for your review. Additionally, the district has filed the property tax report card. It is available for you to look at. That contains a summary of various budget information, including the proposed tax levy this year compared to next year, information regarding the district's tax cap, the amount of monies that the board has currently in our reserves, and our appropriated fund balance. We have a three-part budget requirement in New York State. That is the administrative budget, the capital budget, and the program budget. We are required to present that information and have that available for public review. And there is also a requirement for administrative salary disclosure of administrators that earn, I believe it is more than $100,000, and who have certain titles. Mine would be one of those. The superintendent's salary and costs are disclosed as required by public requirements. Additionally, the budget packet includes the required enrollment data. How many students are we serving? The number of English-language learners, which has been growing as a population of students within our community, which we've talked about in the past. The New York State report card, that includes academic achievement data. As we have emphasized, we achieve higher than the state average when we compare our schools across the state. And we also have a very high four-year graduation rate, including a high graduation rate for our students with disabilities. Additionally, we are required to meet the Every Student's a Seat Act Transparency Report that provides more information for the public at a school level. How are we allocating our budget to each individual school? We have the property tax exemption report, which includes properties within the jurisdiction of East Greenbush Central School District that are exempt from property taxes. And we have the various ballot positions. All that information is available in detail for members of the community to review. The vote will be on Tuesday, May 18th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The methodology of voting will be electronic voting this year. We will not be having a large mail-out ballot vote as we did last year. However, absentee ballot applications will be available. We'll talk about that in just a little bit. And we have the vacancies for board seats, which we will also speak to in just a little while. The voting locations include the Donald P. Southern Elementary School in Nassau for residents of the towns of Sand Lake and Chatham, and also residents of Nassau. Additionally, we have Green Meadow for those residents of the district that reside within the town of Skodak who do not have a Nassau mailing address. Additionally, Howard Algoth is the primary location for residents of the town of East Greenbush. That's our largest polling place generally. To vote at Howard Algoth, if you're a resident of East Greenbush and residents of North Greenbush, vote at Bell Top Elementary School. So four polling places, all very accessible for our community to vote. Voter registration for our school budget and board election is required. Registration can occur through the Rensselaer County Board of Elections or at our district's clerk office, which is located in the central administration portion of Janay Building. If you need to register to vote, you can come between the hours of 8:00 and 4:00, and you can ask for Jean Pangburn, and she will guide you in the appropriate process. During our regular business days, you have also, you are registered if you have voted in the school election in the past four years. So there is no need to register, is that correct? If you have been registered for a school election and voted in a school election in the past four years. Folks should make sure that they register by the end of May 11th because during the period of May 12th to May 17th, the vote rolls have to be sealed for inspection. We have to look at them, to review them, make sure that everything is in order. And then our business hours are 8:00 to 4:00. You can come to the clerk's office anytime during that period if you wish to review the roles of our voters. Additionally, in order to vote in a school board election budget vote, you need to be a citizen of the United States, 18 years of age, a resident of the district for at least 30 days prior to the vote, and registered to vote. Absentee ballots are available through an application process. The application is required. It is available, again, at our district office or on our website. Those ballots, applications for an absentee ballot, need to be filed again by May 11th by mail, or by May 17th if you plan to deliver those applications in person. The ballot will be issued upon receipt and review of the application. Additionally, the ballots are due back in order to be counted by May 18th before 5:00 PM to the Office of the District Clerk, which again is located in the central administration portion of Janay Building. There are many legal reasons for an absentee ballot. One would include vacation, if you could tell from the image. Mr. Buno pointed that out to me. I didn't notice that. Very clever, Ms. Wager. If you are hospitalized, certainly, or anticipate being hospitalized, you can apply for an absentee ballot if you have a disability or an illness. This year, the requirement has changed. If you have a concern about COVID-19, that falls under the category of illness. You may be eligible for an absentee ballot. If you're away on business, vacation, if you are incarcerated or detained, and also if you have any questions about this, you can contact our district clerk for more information. As we have been presenting the budget to our community, we continue to emphasize that our spending plan for next year is aligned with our board's goals and areas of academic excellence. We continue to emphasize the importance of achievement at all levels, but also ensuring that we have an enriched curriculum for students who have all kinds of interests. We want to make sure that our budget is fiscally coordinated and make sure that we have the human resources to provide programs and services to the kid. That includes reviews of class sizes, enrollments across each of our elementary schools, making sure that our staff has professional development and training. Additionally, we foster positive relationships with our families, with our community, with our businesses, with our local colleges. And we want to make sure that those partnerships continue to enhance learning opportunities for our students, and we want to always maintain a progressive, innovative, and safe environment. So on May 18th, there will be three propositions for the community to vote. We are proposing a budget of $103.5 million. That is the general fund budget that we propose for next year. Additionally, the second proposition will include use of a legally authorized reserve that is dedicated to the purchase of replacement of older, higher-mileage buses with new, more efficient and safe buses. We plan to purchase eight buses at a cost of $757,670. And this year, we have the election of four board members. We have four seats available because a partial term was included. A former board member vacated during her term, and Mr. Yaboah, Frank Yaboah, is filling the remainder of that term and is up for reelection. So we have three vacancies for three-year terms and one vacancy for a one-year term, and we have four candidates. I mentioned the buses, eight buses that we will be purchasing. Some of the things that we look at are the mileage of the bus, the operating and maintenance costs, the fuel efficiency. It's important for the community to realize that for every dollar we spend out of the reserve to purchase a new bus, we receive back approximately 67 cents on the dollar through transportation aid. That money goes right back into the reserve to fund future purchases of newer buses within our approximately 102 bus fleet. And we make sure that our reserve funds are available and approved every year to make sure that this is done in a very cost-effective manner. The board candidates have met the requirement to ensure that their petitions have been submitted and received by the district by April 19th. So everyone is in good shape. Our four candidates who are here this evening include John Dunn, an incumbent board member, Frank Yaboah, an incumbent board member, Joanne Taylor, incumbent board member, and we have a new person, maybe not new to all of us, but Cheryl Kennedy, who is a parent of two, three former students in the district. Has stepped forward to run for the Board of Education. We appreciate all of our board members and our new candidate stepping forward to serve the community. The budget, we voted on on May 18th. If it passes, we will continue to plan for next year. We do have under the law an opportunity to submit a second budget for a vote. We also hope that the budget will pass, and we won't have to do that. But we can also implement a contingency budget. But under a contingency budget, we are limited in the amount of money that we can spend on equipment, and we are not able to let community groups use our facilities by state law. One of the things that we want to continue to emphasize to our community is we know that this has been a challenging period of time for our schools, but also for the community. We're very proud that we have worked very closely with our business office, our board, and our administrative team to offer the community a budget that preserves all of our programs and actually adds some programs and services to students in areas such as academic intervention. We also are offering the community a budget that has a 0% tax levy increase. So the amount of money that we propose to raise from the tax levy next year is the same amount of money that we are raising this year through the tax levy. And that is due to a couple of things. We've cut the budget areas on the expenditure side, and we have received a very good increase in state aid and some federal assistance. So that concludes the formal requirements of the budget hearing. All of the information, again, is available on the website for anyone to review. You certainly can contact my office if you have any questions or concerns about the budget. Mr. Adam has put together the budget newsletter. We reviewed that today, and that is scheduled to be sent out to all registered residents, voters within our East Greenbush School District. So thank you very much, and hopefully everyone will come out on May 18th to vote on the budget and the board election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. At this point, Mr. Simons did do the introduction of the board candidates. Those candidates, once again, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Yaboah, Ms. Taylor, and Ms. Kennedy, who is here. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you for coming this evening. The next part of our meeting, the public hearing, is the public comments. And this portion of the board meeting is reserved for the public comments regarding the budget and any comments folks might have about that. So I will read our public comment. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons which to address the board will be recognized by the Chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited. Will be declared out of order. So as we have done in the past several months, we do have a public comment email set up for our community to email in. And I'll turn to Ms. Wager to see if there's any comments regarding the budget.
There are no public comments.
No public comments. Very good. Thank you. During the other board meeting, we'll also have opportunities for folks to listen to the discussion during the Board of Ed regular meeting and make comments as well. With that, I will also now go to the Board of Education comments, and I will start on my left with Mr. Dunn. Anything, John? John's good. Mark, any comments? No. Deanna? Nope. Kathleen? No. Joanne? Good. Frank? Good. And Michelle? Good. And Jennifer? Any comments? Good. Very good. Thumbs up. Thank you. That would then conclude our public hearing. So I need a motion to close the public hearing. Michelle, second. Joanne, all those in favor? All right, the meeting, the public hearing is closed. Switching over to our, whoops, I got to get back on the Word ducks. Went too far. We will now move to the opening of the board meeting for regular business at 7:23. The meeting is now open. All attendees, board members are still here, and I will waive the reading of the pledge a second time. And I'm hoping that our student council is here, Katie, and perhaps Ryan. I just see Katie so far. Oh, there's Ryan, just came in. A little blurry there, Ryan, but we can see you. Get the wipe off that camera lens. Go ahead.
So we just have a quick few updates, as always. As for the seniors, this week was a really exciting week because Saturday was the official college signing day. So on Monday and today, everyone, all the seniors at school were wearing their college apparel. So we got to see everybody where they were going. So that was a really, like, positive point in our year. And then on next Wednesday, we're having a senior breakfast. So those are just a couple of things that are really good for the seniors this spring. So we just wanted to mention those. And then Ryan will explain the rest.
Thanks, Katie. Go ahead, Ryan.
Hi, guys. So we will be filming the Colombian awards ceremony, and we're planning to do that on June 2nd. So we're going to do that like last year, where we're going to have a couple juniors and seniors announce who won the awards, and then we're going to edit that together and release it in the following weeks. And we're also in the midst of planning a food drive, and that's it for us.
Awesome. Thanks, Katie. Thanks, Ryan. Great to hear the things that are going on. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. So I just wanted to mention the board members. We talked about communications around the order of the board agenda and how it looks to streamline it a bit. And you may notice some things in some different order. We thought this process and meeting, Mr. Simons, myself, Vice President Mr. Mann, in reviewing the agenda to see if this would flow a little nicer for us as we go through and have deep discussions about what's happening in the district in the regular business. So you'll see the minutes are a little earlier in the agenda. So with that, the agenda minutes, the draft minutes for April 14th. All were present, and Joanne, you joined a little bit late. If there's any questions or comments or revisions to the minutes for April 14th? Anybody? No? Need a motion to approve the minutes? Kathleen, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. Going to the draft minutes for April 20th. Board members present, there were six, and then a couple came in a little bit late, I believe. Was anyone not there that I didn't catch? I think there was there. Any questions, revisions to the minutes? No? All right. Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes for April 20th. Deanna, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Anybody abstaining? Two, so Joanne and Michelle. Thank you. So our first board forum is tonight. We went through and had opportunity for comments for the public hearing. Is there any regular business board rather than going around? I'll just see if anybody wants to say anything at this point? No? Okay. We'll move to the public forum. I'm going to waive the reading again of the public forum and just let folks know that the email is still available. And do we have anything regarding regular business that might be on the agenda?
Yes, we do.
We do? Okay.
We have one email from Mr. Michael Cini. My name is Michael R. Cini. I am the father of Grace, nine, and John Michael Cini, seven. I currently have my children remote. They are enrolled at Red Mill. I wanted to know what the status of remote learning is going to be for next year. Also, I am not trying to be a problem. However, please help me understand what social distancing has to do with asking questions. I believe my parents have, I believe many parents have the same questions as myself. It seems odd to have this conversation in a private chat. See you all at the meeting.
Okay. So just expressing some concerns, it sounds like. And I think that Mr. Simons had addressed directly an email to Mr. Cini. We appreciate the comments. We understand what our parents are going through. And we do have some more discussion items shortly regarding the reopening. And then, you know, one of the things that is happening for the future, Mr. Simons can probably comment on that as well, is we're still waiting guidance from SED on what a full reopening may look like. But we have seen a lot of things happen in terms of announcements from the governor regarding things reopening more. So that's encouraging. And, you know, my opinion is that we will be open, fully open for September, and then SED will guide us regarding any kind of remote options for families. So. We'll now move to reports and presentations of the superintendent.
I have no other reports.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simons. So we have four discussion items. The first one is the EGTA special grants. Does anyone want to kick that off? Marissa will grab a microphone and talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. The Special Grants Committee met on Tuesday, April 13th to review the five special grants proposals that we had received from our EGTA members. Each year, the Special Grants Committee meets to review proposals for conferences, such as national conferences or other opportunities professionally that would enhance the teacher's content knowledge within their specified subject area. So the five that were submitted, we would like to move forward with recommending their approval. And on the attached memo, you'll notice the amount requested and then the amount that our committee is recommending to the Board of Education.
Thanks, Marissa. Any questions for Marissa regarding the EGTA special grants? Is this down quite a bit from the past?
It is, actually. So the special grants used to have a cap of $18,000, and more recently, we had increased that cap to $40,000 at our last negotiations with our EGTA. But due to the pandemic... But due to the pandemic, there's just been some hesitancy of traveling out of state to the national conferences, many of which have been canceled and have gone virtual. So we anticipate that the following year, for 2022, we might see an increase in a little bit, you know, more opportunities for our EGTA members to do some traveling.
Does look like some very engaging conferences and programs that they're doing. So great. Thanks, Marissa. Moving on to the next item is the pre-K, and I have a discussion about that as we talked about the budget. Mr. Simons, I'll steal your thunder a little bit. There were pre-K funds for the first time in the East Green Bush budget since I've been here, so I don't know how it's been in the past, but it's been some time, and I think this may be a first. So, Mr. Simons?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bino. At prior budget presentations, we shared with the board and the community our state aid report. This year, different than any other year, we received an allocation for universal pre-K, and those are funds that are intended by the state to be utilized for development and funding of a pre-K program. In years past, those funds only went to certain districts based on eligibility through various economic factors. For example, high-needs districts tend to receive and have received universal pre-K funds for many years. This year, we received an allocation of, I believe, $568,000 or so thousand dollars. What's the exact amount, Linda?
$583,600.
Eighty-three. I diminished it a little bit, so I apologize. $583,000. And we wanted to give you a preliminary review of how those monies are to be spent under the state regulations. Before I turn it over to Linda Wager, who has been briefed by the Association of School Business Officials and other organizations regarding these monies. You may recall a few years ago, we applied for a competitive grant with CEO out of Troy to try to see if we could get funding for a UPK class at DPS Elementary School. At the time, because of income and economic eligibility, property value eligibility, and those kinds of factors, we weren't, we did not qualify. This is money that we are receiving to put together a pre-K program, and we want to see if the board is interested in having us move forward on developing a couple of different options for you to review. So Linda has his current on how those monies are to be spent, some of the program requirements. So I'm gonna turn it over to Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. I have some very preliminary information for you on this. The last week, I attended a webinar which was presented by Jason Breslin, who is the Director of Office of Early Learning for New York State. We went through what are described to be new funds, new universal pre-K funds. As Mr. Simons said, our district has been allocated $583,000. This money is to be used for a full-time pre-K program. That is for children who are four years old, and they have to turn four years old by December 1st. And the program has to be five days a week, five hours a day for 180 days. The other information I have on it, we basically, we're going to have to review Ed Law 3602E. Those are the requirements that we need to follow. We talked about what the maximum allocation is, what the allowable expenses are, and, you know, our maximum allocation is $583,000, but it is a per student. So if we don't have the maximum amount of students enrolled, we will receive the per-student allocation for the amount of students that we have. I am attending another webinar next week, actually presented by the State Aid Planners at Questar, and they usually provide us with a lot of information. But this is, it is a voluntary program, and we must, if we're going to have a program, we have to submit an application by July 31st. That is the due date. However, Mr. Breslin indicated to us that they are extending the deadline on those applications just because there's a lot of money out there this year. Also, he indicated to us that they don't expect that the approvals will take place until sometime into September. So while we would be submitting our application in July and possibly looking to start a program in September, we don't have to wait for the approval before we start to recruit students and staffing for that program. That's very preliminary, and I will have information after next week's meeting, but I could try to answer any questions.
Linda, you had said something about a max number of students. Do we have that number?
I do not have that number. I will, I will get that number for you. I don't have what that number is.
And it's, and there's no, we're not sure about if it's a targeted pre-K or a UPK. This is...
I read that document. It cannot be a targeted.
It cannot be targeted.
No, it cannot be targeted. It's a random selection. Random lottery selection.
A district our size, I mean, a PK program, you could probably only do maybe a couple classes.
Well, preliminarily, we were thinking that we would look at possibly two sites, and we haven't really done an extensive
Sure.
...analysis of this at all. DPS makes sense to us because of its location, and Red Mill has space. So we thought if we could develop a program for two sites within the resources that are being provided, typically, the expenses include the hiring of the teachers. The teaching assistant is required if you have 18 students. If you have 20 students, you need two teaching assistants. So those are parameters that are established by the state. You need furniture for those rooms that are pre-K sized, even a little smaller than kindergarten tables and chairs that are smaller. You need materials. All those things are some of the expenses. There are also options to establish your own program, which means hire your own teachers, your own teaching assistants. There's also options where you can, and we have to look into this a little further, have a community agency come into the school and run a program that's within your school. For example, Rensler School District has some of its own programs, but also has CEO operating at least one class there. There are also some local providers who have reached out to us. You can, you can have a program that enables East Green Bush students to have slots at a site operated in a building that's run by one of those private agencies. So there's three or four different options that you can utilize. We want to develop some programs and look at the cost analysis and the curriculum and bring some ideas back.
And one final thing I forgot to mention, the education law 3602E requires that the district uses 10% of our UPK funds to contract with one of these eligible agencies.
Yes.
So we don't know if we're getting enough students.
We don't know our cost yet for one class. What we would probably do is figure out the cost for one class for two classes, classes, and then compare it to our maximum amount, and then you divide it into that to figure out what your tuition reimbursement would be.
Do we normally know that we'll get the money next year, or is this a one-time event?
We have no commitments beyond the current allocation. That's one of the, one of the questions and concerns. Yeah. So the sustainability of these funds. We hate to leave monies that are dedicated for pre-K program on the table and not spend them, but we don't know how long they're going to last, and we have concerns about, you know, the cost within a particular program going up each year, and maybe the, maybe the level of funding either remaining flat or being reduced. And then we start to encroach into the general fund
Sure.
...some of those expenses. So those are some questions that we really have to explore. You know, we may be in a position to create a program and just see what happens because the kids will be moving into, the cohort of kids will be moving into kindergarten anyways, and it doesn't necessarily mean you have a commitment to another group of students coming in. So...
Yeah. I mean, I'm generally supportive of pre-K. We never had this kind of money to do that. Again, I think if we can move forward and find out what the options are, if that's okay, and then the board agrees, and then we can evaluate those options and then see where we can, can go with some potential pre-K offerings in the fall or whatever timeframe we think is appropriate. I agree, sustainability is a critical piece of it. But if we can offer it for at least a year and our children go into kindergarten, they'll have that much, some of those students, at least that ability to be concerned.
It would have to be structured in such a way that they understand that the long-term financial commitment to the program isn't made. One of the advantages of having another agency provide the program in our building is you don't incur that, you don't incur that cost, and you don't incur that long-term obligation. You're paying the agency who pays their employees to run the program on your facility. And it may be actually less expensive because some of their salaries and benefits may be less than ours.
Very good. Any other questions? So we'll wait to hear some more information in future board meetings, Mr. Simons?
Yes. We'll bring it back with more detail for a discussion item.
Okay. Excellent. Jennifer, I can't tell, did you ever want to say something or no? You're good?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, our next discussion item is proposed changes to grades six through 12 reopening plans.
Okay. I want to just give an update to the board and the community regarding some of the changes that we have made and some of the changes anticipate making to increase the in-person learning and/or direct instruction to the students. Just give a report on what we have done and the success of our K through five real briefly. We had completed all of our K-5 children receiving in-person instruction five days per week as of April 26th, when we moved our third, fourth, and fifth graders into our buildings. That transition went remarkably smoothly on all fronts, including classroom instruction, transportation, lunch services to the children. Again, I want to thank the principals, the teachers, and all the support staff and the families for making that work successfully. The grade six through 12 program, we spent the last several weeks planning some changes to that program. You may recall that the New York State Department of Health guidelines that were issued on April 9th were tied to community transmission rates in each of the counties across the country. At the time, we started planning these changes. Cohorting of students at the middle school and high school level was required based on the classification of Rensler County by the CDC. So we went forward, and we planned an option that would involve bringing all of our sixth grade students whose parents wanted them to participate in four days of in-person instruction. That planning is completed. We will be utilizing a learning pod model for situations in which the number of students in each class per period exceeds the capacity, remembering that we're using six-feet social distancing in the sixth grade. I spoke with the administrative teams of the middle school today. There are very small numbers in most classes of students having to be in that arrangement, ranging from two to three, with the exception of one art class that has seven. That just happens to be, there are a lot of kids who happen to take that art course who are currently participating in person. There is a full plan in place to accommodate all of those students, to track those students, and to manage that virtual instruction that will occur within the building. And we see the benefits of that because the kids are coming back into transition and scheduling more of a predictable schedule, having, having to come to school four days per week. We do maintain the full remote option at sixth grade. We will maintain that as long as we are continued required to do that. At the grade seven through 12 level, we had discussions with our teachers' union and with our administrators and through faculty and staff meetings that we felt that it was important to transition our middle school and high school students back to a more regular schedule. We feel that as we prepare for September for full in-person learning, and as Mr. Bino said, we hope that that will happen, and we anticipate that we'll have guidance to enable us to do that. We feel that following their eight-period or their nine-period schedule, even on remote days, is an important transitional step to make sure the kids get back in the groove. So we've asked and required that all of our teachers, regardless of courses, permit kids on their scheduled remote days to virtually live stream into the class, and all of those communications have occurred with our families and with our teachers. We expect that as we move to complete the year, again, there'll be a gradual restoration of some of the normal expectations. However, we recognize that we have to scaffold support for our students. We know that in some cases, our students are going to be experiencing transitions both this year and next year. So in areas such as attendance, while we maintain expectations of good attendance, we're going to be coaching those students into meeting those expectations, and we're encouraging teachers to communicate with our parents and directly with our students if there is an issue where students are late for class, a remote class, or, or missing classes. And so we're going to gradually build up to more of a normal expectation. On Friday of last week, through an informal communication from another superintendent, we learned in our region that the CDC reclassified Rensler County and some other counties as not no longer being at risk of high-risk community transmission to, down to substantial risk. We talked about that among districts on Monday within our region, and over the course of the last couple of days, the suburban council superintendents have, have shared what their plans would be regarding this change. One of the difficulties is that the downgrading, so to speak, of the risk level by the CDC is predicated on a formula that is used by the CDC that doesn't necessarily match the formulas that New York State uses to, to consider the community infection rate. Based on the data that we had available in Rensler County on Monday, we were about 26 positive cases short of being reclassified into the higher risk transmission rate. Makes it very difficult for a school district to plan right now and move all of our kids in for in-person learning. We could be in a situation where we're putting more furniture in classrooms, we're asking more kids to come in on buses, we're asking kids to come, we're asking for the lunchroom arrangements to be changed, only to find out that once we do that, with only 35 days left in the school year, we are required to cohort because the infection rate changes, community transmission rate goes up slightly, and we are back in a situation where we are not in compliance. And we felt that for the rest of this year, and we are being consistent with Rensler County and all of the districts that we work with in the suburban council at the middle school and the high school level, our recommendation is we keep the current program in place at the grade seven through 12 with the virtual live instruction, and we work with the data that we have available to move to the full in-person model in September. But to change now and have to change back, we think would be significantly disruptive of students, of families, and of our staff's delivery of the program. We have heard from some parents concerned about this short transition that we're making to the virtual live instruction. We've had some parents contacting us that they prefer the asynchronous remote. We've had many more parents through our faculty and staff meetings indicating that this was the direction they wished we had gone in earlier, but we weren't able to do so. So our recommendation right now at grade seven through 12 is it's so late in the year that we feel that making any changes based on the new classification of the CDC regarding Rensler County would be more problematic than staying in the course.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Any questions for Mr. Simons regarding the communication? So those communications went out. We have feedback here and there. Board members, any concerns about staying the course for seven to 12, and then moving to the, May 10th, the move would be to the synchronous learning, right, Mr. McQ? Move to synchronous learning for those four days a week? Seems appropriate. I think the, given the timing, that's the way we would proceed. In our sixth grade, seems to be going well.
Sixth grade, we'll start the 10th.
The 10th as well.
And that will be full in-person for those families that want their children to come in four days a week. in four days a week. It's maintaining the virtual Wednesday with many, some, many kids coming in for extra support on Wednesdays at both the middle school and the high school. And the seven and eight would remain at virtual live instruction on the remote days and the two-day-a-week in-person.
Dan, I know, I know we brought in substantial numbers of students who have been struggling as well, right?
It's more than 100 at the high school. I'm not sure of the exact count at the middle school, but where we could bring students in who met certain academic concerns or social emotional concerns, we brought them in for more additional in-person instruction.
Any more comments on this, on this topic? It's, it's, it's difficult. It's too bad it wasn't a couple of months ago when we got this information where we could really transition to a more in-person learning across the board.
If we had gotten the reg, I thank you for saying that, Mr. Buno. If we'd gotten the regulation changes earlier in the year, and if we had anticipate, were able to anticipate this, you know, even, even four weeks ago, three, four weeks ago, we would have made the shift and done the best we could. But in the situation we're in right now, it's, it's just not feasible. And again, I would just emphasize that none of the, none of the other districts are anticipating changing their middle school and high school model this late in the year.
And they're all pretty much in a hybrid type of learning?
Yes.
Will it open up opportunities for our seniors to get together more or other students to get together more besides just the?
Well, we've been opening, we've been opening up in sports. We are, we are revising our graduation plans, which you'll hear about at the next meeting. We are, we are revising our prom plans. We are, anytime we get new set of guidelines, we're, we're following those and.
Friday of five?
Yes, we are, we are working on a parade model, but there are some concerns about the route.
Sure.
And whether or not that can be done from a law enforcement traffic control standpoint. So there's lots of things we're working on. Fifth grade activities, eighth grade activities, and we're having all of those discussions. We expect to be able to give a report at the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Simons. The final discussion item is the summer learning programs. We have talked about this a little bit, but.
We'll turn that one over to Mr. McQ.
Okay, Jim?
Just to give a current update, we sent a survey out to our, all of our K8 parents just seeking whether or not there was interest in participating in that program. Those surveys are extremely important. We only had about 49% of our parents of K8 students respond. We currently have 278, approximately 278 students that would be interested in participating in that summer school program. That drives staffing and planning. That's the importance of, of making sure that folks do respond. We have worked with Questar three BOSs. There is a possibility that our teachers that participate in that summer school program would be able to collaborate with other teachers throughout Rensselaer County, a little bit of professional development, really identifying the core content areas to teach during that summer school period. We are looking at a four-week summer school program, five days a week. And we are looking at a three-hour instructional day for our students and a four-hour workday for our faculty. So we are waiting. There's, it's a little tricky because we really need to see from New York State what's actually allowable under the expenses and what's not an allowable expense. There has been a lot of conversation about transportation and in an effort to be transparent, we run about 30, I know Mark North is on this as well. We run about 38 to 40 buses on a, on a summer school day for our 12-month extended program. It's not necessarily the associated costs with transportation. It's actually being able to run those routes, having the drivers to be able to run the routes for summer school. So a lot of things still being considered. You know, we will look at hardship cases for students that really don't have that transportation to get to and from summer school. It will be housed here at Columbia High School. It'll just be a little bit of a, a delay start. We'll let our 12-month extended program students get in and get situated. And then the arrival time for our, our summer enrichment program will be approximately 30 minutes after. And our 12-month extended program will end those students get on the buses and then our regular summer enrichment program students will be released after that. So we're still working on it.
Great, thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Kathleen?
I actually heard from a parent whose question was, and you probably can't even answer this, is they're trying to make summer plans for their kids for camps and vacations and stuff like that, and they just weren't sure how this could all fit together. And I think before we really have a plan, I don't know that that even can be answered, but that was a concern and their concern was with the questionnaire is there was no place to vocalize that question. So that was the one piece of feedback that I got from the community.
Yeah, people can feel free to email me. I'll answer their questions immediately.
That is exactly what I told them.
We are looking at a July 6th start date and a July 30th end date. And we would encourage that students that want to participate in it, at least give us three out of the four weeks as a minimum.
Thanks, Jim. And our extended school year program runs a little bit longer? Our extended school year program? Any other questions for Jim? Hey, we'll look at the financial piece because there might be some allowable funds for, for that outside the, not using the funds of the budget. So, all right, those are our discussion items for this evening. We're moving on to our regular business. The first item is approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Michelle, second, Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. The next item is a appeal for tax litigation regarding the tax tertiary, I think I said that right, for Empire Realty and joining with the, the town to appeal that decision. Correct, Linda? Any quick comments on that?
Yep, that is correct, Mr. Buno. I think we spoke about this previously. Empire Realty owns multiple properties on Forest Point and Rock Rose Drive, all in the town of East Greenbush, that this case went to trial and we did issue a refund in the amount of $433,990. And in a meeting with the town attorneys, as well as our attorney, the decision was made to appeal, the town would appeal this decision. And they are asking us to participate in the cost of the appeal, which they expect to be between three and three thou, $3,000 and $5,000 to the district. However, it could result, if, if the opinion was overturned, it could result in us receiving a lot of that refund that we issued returned to us.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions for Linda? All right, need a motion to approve that, move forward. Kathleen, I need a second. Deanna, all those in favor? Approved. The next item is the approval of the reopening plan, six to 12. Now, Mr. Simons, does anything have to be filed with the state or the county in terms of an update?
Yes, once this resolution, if this resolution is approved, we will revise the plan that is currently posted on the website. And that is available through the state education department portal. We change, we'll update the plan to reflect this change at the sixth grade, seventh through 12th grade level, and then we'll send another copy to the county.
Okay.
The county does not approve them, the state does not approve them, but they want them to be submitted and they want the public to be available, be able to read them.
Any questions regarding the resolution? I have one, the one statement in bullet two, in both cases, grade six and grade seven to 12, social distancing of six feet will be required. Can that be amended in the future if, if things change?
Yes. Anything within our reopening plan can be amended at any time.
Very good, okay. Just want to make sure that can happen. We do want to be able to adjust and not be locked into something. Okay, all right. If there's no questions, I need a motion to approve the reopening plan, six 12. John, I need a second. Jennifer? All those in favor? Any opposed? No? Kind of grudgingly, I know we all wanted to see something different, but it is the right move, I believe, for our, our students and our families at this point in the school year. The next item is the EGTA retirement incentive MOA. A little bit more background on this, Linda or Jeff?
I'll let Marissa.
Okay, Marissa?
The memorandum of agreement is between the school district and our teachers' association. What it does, it allows for a temporary modification of the eligibility requirements to receive a retirement incentive as laid out within the EGTA contract. It waives the February 1st notification deadline and would provide those individuals who qualified for the benefit, the opportunity to submit a letter of resignation for retirement purposes effective June 30th of 2021, no later than 4:00 PM on May 17th. This memorandum of agreement also provides members who are outside of the three-year window, so those individuals who missed their window of eligibility, it provides them a benefit of 50% of that retirement incentive. So without this MOA, they otherwise would not be entitled to an incentive. If approved, we need a minimum of eight EGTA members to submit irrevocable letters of resignation for retirement. If we do not receive the eight individual letters, the MOA will be null and void and we will return those letters to the individuals who did submit. Does anyone have any questions?
All right, thank you, Marissa. If there's no questions, I need a motion to approve the, the MOA. Jennifer, second, Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved, any opposed? No? Very good. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Marissa, I believe you're the only one this evening?
So the appendix D committee has held two meetings. Does anyone have any questions?
Making progress?
We are, we're making very good progress and we have set three additional dates to meet in the month of May and hopefully we'll have a finalized plan.
By?
I would say by the end of May.
Excellent. Good to hear. Thank you for all your work on that and thank you to the, the teacher association for, for moving forward with that too.
Thank you, Mr. Buno.
Thank you. Any other committee reports, Ms. Wager? Anything?
None at this time.
Mr. McQ? And Mr. Simons?
None.
Very good. Table motions, I have none at this time. All business, board members, anything? That wasn't brought up? So the consent agenda has A through I. There is an addendum for additional election workers. I would ask that in the addendum, we move those election workers to item H, if that's okay with the board members, we'll include, that'll be inclusive. So Gene, when we do the vote, we'll include those folks in with the appointment of the other election workers, so they're all together, okay? Any questions on the consent agenda items? Including the addendum A? Seeing none, any motion to approve the consent agenda? Joanne, I need a second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. New business, board members, anything? I don't see anything. I had a note here, I'm trying to read it. I wanted to just talk to the board in terms of new business about, we're all here in person, there's eight of us, nine of us, I don't know, the governor extended the virtual meetings until end of May. If it's possible, I'd like to start again, get everybody here if it's possible. Again, if the governor extends it again, you'll still have that option. One of the things, I guess, as things loosen up, at what point can we go back to more fully engaging the public? And I just want to just see how, you know, just keep in mind that if there can be more participation, like there is for other events and indoor things, we should think about that. We have a big auditorium, we have some big cafeterias, whether we can do some things like that based on any guidance that we have and limitations, it would be nice to start getting on that path of being more in-person ourselves. I think it shows a good example for the community as well. So, any comments on that? Yes, you're good? Good. And if you do, just, just call me and touch base with Mr. Simons and then we'll maybe develop a plan about how we can do something like that with some big spaces and still continue the requirement of social distancing and all that good stuff for that. Our next item is the public forum. Linda, do we have any more, any comments at all?
There are no public comments.
Okay. We'll go to our second board forum, our start out in virtual land with Jennifer. Do you have anything? Nothing from Jennifer? Michelle? All set? Frank? Joanne? All right. Kathleen? You're good. Deanna's good. Mark Mann?
Good.
And John Dunn?
Good.
I just want to say that it's teacher appreciation week, right, this week? And appreciate the, the work that our staff has done over the course of the year. Of course, not just our teachers, but all our staff, but this is teacher appreciation week. I hope we've been able to celebrate in our buildings and throughout our community of the work that our teachers have done with our students and families over the course of this year. So, so thank you very much with that. We do have need for an executive session for purposes of contractual issues, so we'll need to set that up. Peter will give Jennifer five minutes to get that set up and we'll log on, okay? Thank you. So with that, I need a motion to move into executive session. Frank, a second. Kathleen? All those in favor? All right. Have a great night, everybody. We don't anticipate any other business after the executive session, so thank you for, for tonight.